Thank you.
First up on our agenda tonight is announcements, so I'm going to go down to Ms. Frescatore and bear with us a little bit because it's a little bit different for us being here, but we'll do the best we can to keep things flowing.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I would like to thank all of you for coming tonight. It's always nice to see residents attend our meetings. I have one announcement tonight. It's for a very worthy cause. Jackson's Heroes 5K Foundation is hosting its second annual family fun run. The event will be held on Sunday, October 15th, in Warmminster Community Park, starting at 9:00 a.m. There we go.
Beautiful.
This is a superhero-themed run/walk on a USATF-certified 5K route. Everyone should come dress as their favorite superhero. A large portion of the proceeds raised will be donated in Jackson Silas Cole's name to the YMCA's second-grade swim program. This swim program provides lessons for children identified to need additional swim instruction. To register or to find opportunities to sponsorship, please visit www.jacksonheroes5k.org. Please remember, this is a very worthy cause because it identifies children in second grade who need the additional instruction to learn to swim. So if you can participate or donate, I'm sure they would be very happy for this cause. Thank you. That's all I have. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Frescatore. Mr. Monroe?
I'd like to say, thank you for having us at Ann's Choice tonight. Thank you.
Mr. McPhillips?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to say that I'm happy to be here tonight. I'm excited to be here tonight. You know, through the years, I've had several opportunities to come here to Ann's Choice and give township updates and listen to the questions and concerns of residents. And that is in large part due to two people, Sally Rosen and Ella Cohen. Sally and Ella are here tonight, and Sally, thank you so much. Sally and Ella, they do an excellent job of informing the residents of Ann's Choice, not just what's going on at the local level, but at the county level, state level, and the federal level. And Sally and Ella, thank you so much for everything you do. If I can, I'd like to take an opportunity to talk about two things that are really passionate, that I'm very passionate about. And one is the Township's prescription drug drop-off program. Now, I understand that Ann's Choice has your own program, and I think that's excellent. If you tuned into our last township meeting, you heard that our district attorney talked about how Bucks County leads the way in taking back prescription medications. And I would argue that that's in large part due to communities like Warmminster Township. We have an excellent program. In fact, we've been taking back prescription medications for the last five years, and in that time, we've taken back thousands of pounds, thousands of pounds of prescription drugs. And in fact, when I was first elected to board five years ago, that was job one for me. I reached out when I was first elected. I reached out to our DA. I also reached out to our police department, and we got a permanent prescription drop-off box here in the township. And the reason being, we all know, we've all seen on the news far too many times, where people who die over heroin overdoses. And so that's why it's so important that they know and understand that these people are dying 90% of the time, 95% of the time. They're starting off by abusing prescription painkillers. So it's so important to tell your family, tell your friends to utilize the drop-off program that we have here in Warmminster. The second thing, Mr. Chairman, if I can say, is something I'm passionate about, is reforming the Sterling Act. If you don't know, the Sterling Act was a law that was passed in the early 1930s. And what it did was, it allowed communities, cities such as Philadelphia, to do two things. One is to impose a city wage tax, which currently, right now, is approximately 3.5%. And two, the law also said that where you have communities such as Warmminster that imposes a 1% earned income tax, those residents who live there but work in Philadelphia, that 1% earned income tax stays in Philadelphia. So what does all this mean to Warmminster Township? Here in Warmminster, we have roughly 1,600 residents that live here in Warmminster but work in the city of Philadelphia. So what we're talking about is because of the Sterling Act, losing out on roughly $400,000. I'm going to repeat that. Because of the Sterling Act, our community is losing out on roughly $400,000. So if you can imagine, we have Warmminster residents who every morning go up to, I'm going to try to point to the train station, I guess it's going to be over this way, right here, take the train ride down to Warmminster Train Station, take the ride down to Philadelphia, go to work. At the end of the day, they come back, take the train ride back. But that 1% or revenue from Warmminster, as I see it, never takes the train right back to Warmminster. That money stays in Philadelphia. So what can you do? Currently, right now, we have legislation in the House and the Senate in Harrisburg, two bills reforming the Sterling Act. Please communicate with the governor, communicate with our state rep and our state senator, and tell them that you support reforming the Sterling Act. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McPhillips. Mr. Crowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just first, I want to thank Ann's Choice for having us back. A couple months ago, we were able to have the Comprehensive Plan Subcommittee have a sort of a visioning meeting with the residents of Ann's Choice. It was by far one of the most interactive meetings we had. The ideas and dialogue that we had with the residents here was terrific. And I invite you, again, tonight, please feel free to participate and let us know what you're thinking. That's why we're here. We wanted to come to you. We wanted to hear your thoughts and your ideas in order to make Warmminster, you know, a better place for families and businesses to call home. And speaking of businesses, I just want to introduce the new businesses that have come to town in the last month. Yuck Truck LLC, which is an office and truck garage, went into business at 385 Nina Way. E2 Accuracy, which is a gunsmith and manufacturer, opened up at 134 York Road. Child and Family Focus, which provides youth services, is now at 755 York Road, Suite 204. Abra Autobody and Glass, which is auto body repair, is at 555 West Street Road. And CA Briggs Company, which is manufacturing wholesale items, is located at 622 Mary Street, Suites 101. As always, we welcome these businesses to town and wish them all the best while they're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. I have a few announcements. First, I want to thank Ann's Choice and Kristin Adi, who's here tonight, and the Board of Directors for putting this on for us. This is the first time that the Warmminster Board of Supervisors, in my memory, has had an off-site meeting, and it's a real thrill to be here with you. And we have some other township officials and representatives that are in the room, including Lieutenant DeLuca, who's here from the Warmminster Police Department, and Karen Whitney, our Park and Rec Department Director, in case there's any questions anyone would like to ask of them while they're in the room tonight. And I also want to tell you personally what a thrill it is to be here with the Greatest Generation. It really is. I've been in touch with the Greatest Generation my entire life. I'm the youngest of 12 children. And my mother and father were Depression-era people, World War II people, and I learned a lot about hard work and good ethic from them. And there were nine boys and three girls. And my mother smoked cigarettes, drank a Manhattan every day, and lived to be 89. And I actually brought a list of her one-liners with me that we can go over after the meeting, if anyone would like to hear them, because she had a terrific sense of humor. But thanks again for having us. So I'm going to move on with the meeting agenda for tonight. And we made a quick switch. We had it under announcements. It'll be our first presentation tonight. And it's the August Business of the Month Centennial Education Foundation. And Dan McPhillips and Jason Crowley would like to present this on behalf of the Economic Development Committee.
Working. There we go. All right. So the Economic Development Committee was started, I believe, late December 2015. And the idea behind the Economic Development Committee was to serve as an advisory board for all the activities that the township staff and administration are undertaking to continue bringing businesses into this community. But we also wanted an opportunity to support the businesses that already were in existence here, because we've talked a lot about, hey, Weiss Markets is coming here, and Lidl's coming there. But there's a lot of great businesses, small business owners in town already. We wanted to come up with a way to start recognizing them and give them a little boost wherever we can. To that end, we are now starting something called the EDC Business of the Month program. And tonight is the first month we're doing it, so please bear with us as we work out the kinks. Tonight, we are happy to honor the Centennial Education Fund. In a couple moments, we'll bring up the individuals from the CEF, and let them tell you about what their foundation does and everything that happens there. Before I do that, I just wanted to offer the mic to the founder of the Economic Development Committee, Mr. Dan McPhillips, to see if he has any words.
Congratulations. Jason, you said it well. Congratulations to our first honoree to this.
I meant a few words. So each month, the businesses will be selected by the Economic Development Committee and honored. And the selection's based on membership in the Chamber of Commerce. And we try to choose seasonally appropriate honorees. Therefore, we're going back to school. We thought our first honoree at the Centennial Education Foundation would be a great way to start. And so I'd like to invite up the members of the foundation to come up on stage, if you would. Please. All right. And to introduce the members of the Centennial Education Foundation here, I'm going to call on former supervisor and CEF member Wayne McCullough to introduce everyone.
My chance with the microphone. Thank you. Yes, my name's Wayne McCullough. I'm a longtime member of the Centennial Education Foundation. Our executive director is Carolyn Fisher. Bob Phillips is our president. And, oh, no, you're the vice president. And Bob Schrader is our former executive director and now the vice president.
First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for this recognition and honor. I've been on the foundation since it was started 21 years ago. It was the brainchild of a former superintendent who thought that it would be a good idea to have stakeholders from a lot of various areas, whether it was businesses, or school, or parents. They just came from a lot of different areas to come together to raise funds so that we would be able to support programs that taxpayers or the school district just couldn't afford to do. Well, the board has done a fabulous job. We're starting our 21st year. We still continue to operate. And so far, we estimate, we don't know exactly, but we estimate that we've given away approximately $1 million. There's been 400 grants. It's impacted over 200,000 students. And so as a result of all of that, I'm just going to read to you exactly what we are. Centennial Education Foundation is a 501(c)(3) tax-exempt nonprofit organization committed to providing enriching educational opportunities, programs, and projects for students in the Centennial School District. CEF is independent of the school district. The mission is to secure resources from individuals, corporations, community organizations, and other foundations to be distributed in support of programs that benefit students in the Centennial School District. Since 1997, our grant projects have impacted the educational needs of thousands of students. The foundation relies solely on donations. Every dollar contributed is fully tax-deductible. Every dollar raised and invested will be used locally. Your contributions help guarantee the future of our students and our community. So with all that being said, it really is a wonderful organization. I am proud to be here, to be able to represent CEF, and I'm honored that we're being recognized for the hard work that we've done over the last 21 years. Thank you.
If anybody wanted to learn more about the organization, is there a website? Is there a way to get more information?
There is a website. As a matter of fact, we're going to launch a new website, so it will be probably maybe two weeks before it's up and running. But it's www.CentennialEF.org for Centennial Education Foundation. And all of our events are there, and we've even held events in Ann's Choice on a yearly basis. Ann's Choice has been a wonderful supporter of the foundation, and thank you to all of you for that.
It is now my privilege, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors of the Economic Development Committee, to present the CEF with this incredibly fancy certificate. Don't worry, we didn't spend too much tax money on it. But it's the thought that counts. We appreciate you and everything that you do for our community. Thank you guys so much. You'll see more about CEF on both our TV channel and our social media. And please, if you have the means to help support the CEF, it's vital for our community. The best way to build a community, the most important thing to every resident and business coming into this community, and we can back this up with surveys, is the quality of the school district. The quality of Centennial School District has been elevated, not only through the efforts of the educators in the district, but by groups of individuals like this, and we salute them. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you. Wayne rules. Bob, good to see you, bud. How's it going? All right? We'll get together. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
You, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. All right, the next presentation on tonight's agenda is Karen McNair, who is our Township Engineer, who's going to do a presentation on the MS4 PRP and TMDL plans, and Karen will explain what they are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here tonight to talk about the Township's MS4 permit. An MS4 stands for the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. The Township currently has a permit that started in March 2013. Prior to that, there was a 10-year permit cycle that started in March 2003. But the reason we're here tonight is your current permit expires in March 2018. And so on September 16th, you're required to submit a notice of intent, which is basically your permit application. As part of that, and part of the new requirements under this grant term, you're required to propose a total maximum daily load and a pollutant reduction plan. And we've combined these since you have both requirements under what we call an MS4 pollutant reduction plan, and that is in your packets for you. The pollutant reduction plan has two main requirements that must be addressed. That is the TMDL, which again is your total maximum daily load. The TMDL for sediment was established in December of 2003 by the US EPA for the Little Nishamani Creek. And the TMDL for sediment and total phosphorus was established in June 30th of 2008, also by the US EPA, in the Southampton Creek, which is a sub watershed or a smaller portion of the Penny Pack Creek. What we've prepared in the MS4 pollution reduction plan supersedes the previous TMDL reduction plans submitted for these watersheds. The next requirement is the pollution reduction plan, which is required for any impaired streams that have been identified by the US EPA or the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. The impaired streams identified are the Little Nishamani Creek and Nishamani Creek, which have been identified as being impaired for nutrients. And the issue they have with creeks is that they generate algae growth, among other things. The second impairment that was identified is in the Penny Pack Creek and some of its unnamed tributaries or portions that go to the creek that don't have specific names because they're much smaller. And the impairments in the Penny Pack Creek are sediment and nutrients. What this all means is that because you have TMDLs in the pollution reduction requirements, the DEP has required that you must reduce sediment loads by 10% and total phosphorus loads by 5% over this next five-year permit term. And to do this, we had to create an existing loading and then show what your proposed loading would be. But to do that, first, we had to create planning areas to show what the township is responsible for. And those are the green areas on here. And that is anything that drains to the township's storm sewer system, the township roads, or township-owned lands. The things that we could remove, which are the areas in white, is anything that drains to a state road or directly to a stream, or is owned by the Commonwealth or the county. So the BMPs that we are proposing to reach these required reductions in sediment and total phosphorus, it's about 500 feet of stream bank restoration in each of the watersheds, a basin in Barnest Park, a filter strip or a swale in Monroe Park, a basin in Sismanic Park, and a basin in Shunandoh Woods. And the BMPs that are proposed within the parks would not operate, they would not affect the operations of the park. They would be in the out-of-the-way area so that we're not limiting what the parks can function for. Once these BMPs would be installed, and they need to be installed within this five-year permit term, public works would maintain them. As part of this plan, public comment is required. This has been advertised to be discussed at this meeting and is also available for comment on the township's website. If you go to the township website, it's under Public Information, Stormwater Management, and then you can find it on those stormwater links. For anybody who is not available to make comment at the meeting tonight, they are also being accepted in writing at the Township Building or via email to kaymccovern@warmminsterpa.org until August 24th. And that is what I have for you tonight, unless you have any questions.
Is there any questions or comments from the board? I mean, I have a few, but I'll reserve mine for... This plan has been discussed a little bit, and this is actually an unfunded mandate by the federal government that the municipality's going to have to absorb. And within the next five years, we have to complete this. Am I correct?
Yes.
Is there any questions from the public on the plan? Can you come up and...
My name's Bob Trotter. I'm just curious, how many basins are you building?
It would be proposed for three basins to address the impairments for asiltation and nutrients. So it would be unrelated to general stormwater management.
Unrelated. Okay. So, all right. How big are these basins? Are you talking acre, two-acre, or more?
We do not have exact designs yet. What's required at this point is to locate where they could go, but they have not been designed at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other comment before the board takes action on the plan?
Hi, my name is Donna Elms. I did have a few questions for you. Why did you decide on basins instead of the vegetative infiltration system?
We mostly went with basins because of the drainage areas that are going to the areas that we felt we could have the most impact with the amount of area that we were gathering and can treat in one area. So a basin can capture a larger drainage area and therefore can treat larger amounts of sediment and the nutrient loads that we need to. So rather than constructing, you know, multitude of smaller BMPs, we decided to look at areas that could have larger BMPs, and that's why we came up with the basins.
Would you consider putting native plantings in the basins?
Yes. I believe that if we can support landscaping in the basins, that they would be incorporated into the design.
And so in the Sismanic Park specifically, am I, to understand you, you're not positive where you want to put the basin at this time?
I believe we are looking to put it closer to the stream behind the football field at this time. But again, it's not been designed yet, so we would have to take a look at it once we get to the design process.
And how long would that be?
Well, it's required to be completed in the five-year permit term.
So you don't have a timeline at this point?
Not an exact timeline at this point.
Let me ask you this. As the design process takes place, you will come back and we'll review them publicly?
Yes, we can do that.
For public input?
Yes.
Would you consider that there's a community garden back there and maybe not disrupting it?
Yes, we can take that into consideration, definitely.
Okay. All right. And one more question. In the Penny Pack watershed, I saw that there was actually no numbers. Is that because someone else is responsible for that information?
There is no numbers. Are you talking about Table F2?
On the total loads with the phosphorus and sediments?
Well, Table F2 has no information for the Penny Pack Creek because it does not have a TMDL plan, and therefore there are no requirements for it.
So I guess I'm going to asking is, how was it determined that there were phosphorus and sediment loads if there's no numbers to back that up?
So the impairments were determined by the US EPA and the PADEP, and they provided all municipalities in Pennsylvania... I'm trying to open to it. They provide all municipalities in Pennsylvania with a table that provided the impairments and the requirements and the causes of impairments. So anything that's in the report as to how we determine which watersheds had which impairments for which items came from that table that they provided.
So they just didn't provide it, is what you're telling me?
Yes, they did not. There is no TMDL plan for the Penny Pack Creek. The only thing that was identified in the table was asiltation impairment. And so the Penny Pack Creek loads were only calculated as part of the pollution reduction plan portions of the report, the plan.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions or comment from the board?
My microphones. There it is. Okay. I think it's really good. We're taking this initiative. Obviously, the public is not totally familiar with everything that's happening with the plan. Is it something that could be posted on our website, Greg, for the public to see as we go along, and if they have comments or questions?
It has been for, I believe, at least three or four weeks now. So it's already up there.
I mean, as it's moving along. So when we have more information on some of the other areas that they're talking about?
Well, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, the plan as it's designed right now is scheduled to be adopted tonight if the board wishes to take action. But as we go forward with the implementation of the plan over the next five years, we can certainly post any information to say, okay, we're ready to tackle this basin, start posting information about the proposed design, and solicit feedback. So we can absolutely do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And correct me if I'm wrong, we have to budget as we move on with this because the township has to absorb these costs.
Correct.
Okay. Well, if there's no other comments from the public or the board, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the Township MS4 PRP and TMDL plans. Mr. Monroe, second? Mr. Crowley? Any other comment from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay. Next, we're going to move on to public comment. We have a podium up here. Anyone that wants to come up and discuss. Township residents have the opportunity at this time to comment on any non-agenda item subjects to a five-minute guideline as recognized by the chair. So if anyone has a public comment, please come up, give us your name. Obviously, the residents, we know your address. So give us your name, tell us who you are, and we'd be glad to hear your comments.
Can I talk about stormwater?
Anything you'd like. Come on. Yeah, Amanda's. She'll take...
All right. My name's Bob Trotter, and I live on Centennial Road on the backside of the new basin that was just put in. And I have some pictures here I'd like to hand out. There's only five sets. If you guys could share them. I'm the guy that brought this flooding situation to the Township's attention. I did the deed permits. I found county builders and all that for the whole thing. And I just got home from a trip, and my wife is complaining about our pool motor not working. I went outside and found out my pool motor had been submerged underwater. $350 later, I got to buy a new pool motor. So I started looking into what was going on with the new basin behind my house. And picture one is of the drain, okay? So picture this is the old basin back here, okay? The new basin's on this side. The spillway they made is right here. And on the far side, there's a drain that runs down the creek along the houses on Centennial Road. And I live in those houses right there. And for the last untamed million years, we've been flooded out from this basin, over surging the small creek, and running into our properties. So if you turn to page two, I pointed out where the old basin was, the new basin, the spillway. And that carpeting, that nylon carpeting is the top of the spillway that they put in, which is the old end of the old basin. They cut out the one mound, and they put the spillway in there. On the far back end, you'll see a metal corrugated pipe. And that's a 36-inch pipe that used to feed the creek behind my house. to feed the creek behind my house. So that's the problem right there. The top of this spillway is even with the top of that corrugated pipe, that 36-inch corrugated pipe. And if you go back to the first page, you'll notice that it's a 12-inch drain in the middle of that pipe. So if you turn to page three, from the bottom of that pipe to the top of that old pipe is 23 inches, which means the old basin has to fill up 23 inches before any water goes over that spillway and into that new basin. So the tiny little creek we have back there is still being over, it's overflowing. So the creek in some points is only 12 inches, maybe 15 inches wide. The bank between the creek and the houses is virtually, in some areas, only eight inches. So when this creek swells, it goes into the yards very easily. So now, the basin in areas, when they, the blueprints show the basin being level with the spillway. Well, they raised the spillway a few inches, and the foreman actually told me they raised it eight inches. And that was to keep the water in the basin to keep the plants and everything alive in the basin, basically, which I understand that. But at the same time, they never raised the pipe to compensate for that. So if you go to page four, this is the inside of the new basin. And the water you see in there is not from anything going over the spillway, it's from the fractured shale rock underneath, and the water seeps through. So I just wanted to point that out. And it's a beautiful big basin. It's five acres of beauty, and it's not going to be used until you have a 100-year storm or some major front come through. But in the meantime, all the houses on Centennial Road are still in jeopardy because of the location of that pipe. If you turn to page five, the problem with this creek is that it has never been maintained, and to this date, it's still not maintained. Inside that hedge row along the grass right there, that's where the creek is. So you can't even see the creek at all. On the back area there, where I got eight inches shown, that's where the water pours through into the neighborhood. So it just...
Bob, can I stop you for a second? Because I have a question.
Sure.
Are you telling me that the spillway is higher than the bank that goes to the houses? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying the spillway is 23 inches higher than the pipe. So the basin has to fill up 23 inches before it hits the spillway and goes over.
But it's lower on your side, the house's side?
No, the spillway is leveled across. It kind of slopes up a little at the end down there, but there's a tree down there, and then the pipe is just beyond it. So, but the whole thing has got to fill before it goes over, and that's the problem. Now, there are high areas inside the old basin, there's low areas, it's not completely flat. So when they did the survey, they came up with like 27.8 inches or something like that. It's not like that. If you walk in there, you're going to sink way in, you're going to be really high up, so. So it's not a full 23 inches, it has to fill, it could be 18, but still, one acre of 18 inches of water is a lot of water for a small creek. So easily, it goes over and it surges into the yards right at the eight-inch point. If you go to page six, that's what a lot of the creek looks like. It's a very narrow, tiny creek. There are wide areas to it, and there's some little deep pools, but most of it is shallow and it's very narrow. And if you go to page seven, this is what I'm talking about. This is a tree that's been laying over this creek for the last five years, which I have come to the township multiple times about. And I was told it would be cleared out when the new basin was put in, but what they did was they cut the section on the far side of the creek towards the new basin, they left the tree hanging across the creek, and it's just one of many, many objects. I found beds in this creek, I found flotation dinghies, everybody dumpster junk back here.
Runs behind my house as well.
Exactly.
I know what you're talking about.
But this creek back behind my house is completely overgrown, it's used by potheads and kids back there from the high school, and it's just not maintained. Nobody cares about it, nobody monitors it, and it routinely clogs up. And when it does, and you've got a 12-inch pipe, but all that water coming through there, it goes right into the yards. So my question is, I'm hoping this will happen, is that this pipe on page one is raised up to the top of that corrugated pipe, the middle of, if you see the amount of water flowing through on page one in that pipe, that amount of water keeps that creek alive. And that's all that pipe is for, is to keep that creek alive. It doesn't have to be 12 inches, it just needs that amount of water to keep that creek alive. And the creek is flourishing, there's little fishes, frogs, there's everything back there. So anything beyond that needs to go into the new basin. That's what the basin was designed for. So there needs to be an adjustment to this pipe. The middle of that pipe needs to be level with the spillway. So any surge at all goes into the new basin and not into the houses and into that creek.
It's okay with you. I'd like to pass it along to the professionals for their input.
Well, I've already talked to Amanda and Greg, and they're going to do a survey of the elevations and all that stuff, but the bottom line is, it'll come back correct, except for maybe what they raised on the spillway, but that still doesn't mean it works, doesn't mean we're still safe.
Mr. Trotter, if you remember when you contacted me two years ago...
Yeah.
Because I live on the bottom of Centennial.
Right.
And the last hard rains we've gotten, it's still like the river coming down Centennial Road. And I know that you get it the hardest.
Right.
I did check out the property when we talked about it, and if you remember, I had serious concerns about that basin that the county builders were making up there that was going to control the water problems in our area. And I was hoping that it would solve the problems of your one neighbor that was losing her home. Is she still in danger of losing her home?
No, the, McAllister took a contract from county builders, and they were actually over there. They're going to redo the banks of the Vallone's House in Abanickers. They're going to do all that.
Okay.
But they're downstream from me.
Right.
And they don't get what I get.
Yeah, I think Bob's issue is up above that. I understand where you're talking about.
Right, so pretend this is the top of the spillway. The pipe needs to be right here, half above it, half below it. So if there's a surge, you'll get a surge to wash any, whatever you want out of the creek, but the majority is going into the basin, and that's my beef of this whole thing.
I'm glad you brought it up because I noticed the last two rainstorms that we had, that there was water coming down again, down Centennial Road like a river. And I had thought that the basin was going to handle these issues, and I'm not impressed with it either. So I have serious concerns like you do, and I do hope that we can come to some kind of agreement where they can fix it so that we, all the neighbors will not have their family rooms flooded. My neighbors on both sides, they had their, the last storm, they had damage in their, because our homes are underground partially in the back. So I'm glad you brought it up.
I mean, it's a great basin, it was a great job. I applaud the township for getting this done. It's just, you know, this, the pipe's got to be adjusted, that's all.
Sounds like we did need some adjustments, so I'm going to pass along a...
That's it. You know, I'm not, it's not a huge thing that I'm asking for, you know, so.
Well, I'm going to pass along Mrs. McPhair for her input. Go ahead, Karen.
Well, we did go out to the site and take a look at the basin, and in the field, there's no, we visually can't see any issues that it was not built in accordance with the approved design. And the design was approved both by our office on behalf of the township and also the PADEP.
Right.
So at this point, I think we have to wait for the ASVOT plan to confirm whether or not the basin was built in accordance with the approved design.
Well, I'm sure it's going to come back approved. It's going to go, it's, they're going to say it's great, I'm sure of it. But the bottom line is, unless the pipe is raised, we're still going to be in the same predicament we were before.
And are we going to be able to monitor this? We get a storm, can we, can we monitor that this isn't functioning properly?
Yes. Yes, we can do that.
I mean, unless you walk back there and walk through the weeds this high, you're never going to get to the creek, you're never going to know. It could easily go into the yards, you're never even going to be able to tell. I mean, the creek is three yards long, each yard is 75 feet wide, that's how long the creek is, and that's how, only maybe from me to you is visible, and after that, it's buried. You know, it's thorns, it's, you know, it's tough to get into, so.
The improvements agreements do require an 18-month maintenance bond for the project even once it is closed out, so the township will have some assurances that they must maintain it.
That it's functioning, that it's doing what we all thought it was going to do.
Yes.
And if it's not doing what we all thought it was going to do, I think that the township needs to take action.
Okay. Well, thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
And Bob, we all thought the same as you, believe me.
Okay.
Because we know this has been, this has been something we've been working on for five-plus years, so.
Right, right. Do you want to hang on to this picture? You want me to collect it?
Yeah, well, I would like to, if it's okay with you.
Okay. All right, guys, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And we will be, we will be monitoring. Is there any other public comment? Any other comment from the public? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Consent agenda for this evening, and for those who are unfamiliar with a consent agenda. A consent agenda is a group of items which are considered perfunctory in nature and normally do not necessitate any kind of debate amongst the board and are usually passed with one motion. Should any member want to discuss an item or items in further detail, they can pull it from the consent agenda. That is the purpose of a consent agenda, is to move a number of items at once without holding up the meeting for a discussion on each item. So tonight's consent agenda, we'll start with Item A. That is approval of the minutes from your meeting July 20th, 2017. Item B is authorization to advertise an RFP for mowing and turf surfaces, 2018 to 2020. Item C, authorization to advertise an RFP for cleaning services, 2018 to 2020. Item D, authorization to advertise an RFP for court resurfacing at Monroe Park, that's for two tennis and one basketball court. Item E is approval of a Tracer software purchase agreement. I think, as you're aware, for the last few years, we've been using a software package down in Allen High. It has not met our needs, and Amanda has gone through a search and has decided that Tracer, which a number of area municipalities are using, would greater meet our needs and really make operations a lot smoother down in Allen High, and for other departments as well. Item F is approval of the removal of Central Buck's Family YMCA as a sub-grantee of the RACP grant, the RACP contract. If you recall, a number of years ago, it was at first decided that the RACP grant was going to be redirected towards a building, a YMCA. Since then, we've had a change of direction where the RACP grant is being used exclusively at improvements of the park. We've talked about that at a previous meeting. This would formally remove the Central Buck's Family YMCA as a sub-grantee from the paperwork that we're working on with the state. Item G is a release from Prestige, escrow release from Prestige Property, 216 Maple Street, in the amount of $12,398 plus any accrued interest. Item H is an escrow release from I-3 Pharmaceuticals, the amount of $1,000 plus any accrued interest. Item I is Warmminster Commerce, 450 York Road, release number four final, as recommended by the engineer, in the amount of $438,457. Item J is also Warmminster Commerce, 450 York Road, release number one final for the off-site drainage improvements, as recommended by the engineer, in the amount of $15,095. Item K is the Hart School redevelopment, release number eight from the escrow account, as recommended by the engineer, for the amount of $88,063. Item I is 545 Sixth Avenue, amended final land development approval. This goes back to 2003, where this board did a approval of a minor subdivision. This was never recorded, and this is just a reapproval of that plan. Item M is Resolution 2017-29, which is expanding the membership of the Pension Investment Advisory Committee. If you recall, at the last meeting, based on feedback through the RFP process when going out for defined benefit pension consultant, it was decided to include union representatives on the Pension Investment Advisory Committee. The board chose to have a representative from one, the uniform, the police union, and one from the non, one of the two non-uniform unions. The feedback that was received from the unions was that they were disappointed that not all unions could be represented, so this would change that to have one member from each of the three unions represented on that advisory committee. And Item N, assuming that you approve Item M, is the appointments to said committee for, the names are, for each one of the three unions, the names are listed in your packet.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Monroe, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Frescatore, is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
With Item N, are we voting on an appointment now?
Yeah, for three appointments.
Okay. Yeah, could we have the names of the...
Yes, for Public Works, it's Gene Astorito, Police, John Benargo, and for the Whedeo Union, Ann Duffy.
Cool, thank you.
And these were all selected by the respective unions.
Of course. I just wanted to understand exactly what we were saying there, so. Thank you, that's all I had.
Okay. No other discussion, I'll ask, I'll call a question. All in favor of adopting the consent agenda?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next up on our tonight's agenda is the Treasurer's Report. Mr. Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, I have July transfers in the amount of $33,000, sorry, $33,984.79. I have a supplemental bill list dated July 28th, 2017, in the amount of $540,429.31, and a bill list dated August 17th, in the amount of $1,340,925.13. I do make a motion to accept those.
Okay, motion, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Frescatore, is there any discussion on the Treasurer's Report and approval of the transfers and bill list? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next up is the July financial statement. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fortunately, our financial statement continues to look good in all funds. The revenues and expenditures are still on track. We do have a significant overage on the transfer tax. It is basically at budget right now, a little past halfway through the year, so that is good news. Also, building permits have already exceeded their revenue targets, and again, that's also very good news. Nothing else to report other than that we are on track. We do have some amendments that are coming up next, and probably another budget amendment or two later on the year, but right now, no concerns to report, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions on the financial statement?
Great job.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schuster. And next up is a budget amendment, 2017, number two, Resolution 2017-27. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have the budget amendment before you. We are asking to make several transfers. One addresses an under-budgeting situation we had in a salary line item for the police department, and an unexpected payout of a separated employee in that department. We also have some minor library fund transfers, mostly related to the resignation of the janitor there, and a decision not to fill that position, but rather use our cleaning service that we've been using with the other buildings in the library. So that necessitates a change in the line items as well. Also, Park and Rec is, the Park and Rec Fund is utilizing more of the Tree Escrow Funds, and also transferring some funds, some additional funds to capital reserve. If you remember, at the last meeting, I mentioned that we decided not to finance the purchase of a vehicle. The interest rate, I believe, was in excess of 5%, which we thought was unreasonable, and just rather just go outright and purchase the vehicle, which is what the budget amendment will allow us to facilitate.
It requires action.
Yes, that requires, it's a resolution that requires approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2017-27? Mr. McPhillips, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Crowley, any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Okay, there is no unfinished business tonight, so we'll be moving right on to new business. Item A is review and consider the adoption of Ordinance 740, Noise Ordinance Amendment. Mr. Savona.
Mr. Chairman, the board authorized last month the advertisement of Ordinance 740, which is an amendment to Chapter 10, Part 3 of the Township Code, to adjust some of the regulations relating to noise and the noise limits within the township. At present, the township uses a sound decibel meter in order to determine whether a noise is in fact unlawful. That proves difficult in some circumstances to enforce, and especially when we don't have the ability to measure the sound decibel to exceed the existing limit where it may actually be a nuisance or a problem to a nearby property owner. This amendment would change the standard to one which is used by other municipalities that does not rely solely on a sound decibel meter reading. It also sets time limits for certain activities, which would generally set the hours where It also sets time limits for certain activities, which would generally set the hours where noise could not disturb residents between the hours of 7:00 PM and 8:00 AM for most activities, with some exceptions. Saturdays, 7:00 AM, I'm sorry, 7:00 PM Fridays to 8:00 AM Saturdays. As I said, there are some exceptions, but in all other respects, the board has reviewed this. The ordinance has been advertised for adoption this evening, and a motion would be in order to approve Ordinance 740.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 740?
Motion.
Ms. Frescatore, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Monroe, discussion from the board? Comments? I know, Mr. Monroe, this was something that you championed.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say thank you to my fellow board members, first of all, for indulging me in this, and number two, for pushing the time back on Saturday. Now, this is something that I would also like to thank the citizens. I mean, this is something that I've been, you know, I ran a couple of times for this position, so I've knocked on quite a few doors, and this is something that I've heard back from residents more times than I can count. So I appreciate their involvement as well, and, you know...
One of those residences in the room tonight, in fact.
Thank you. You know, it's one of those things where, you know, we can't improve our quality of life in Warmminster with one fell swoop overnight, but we can take little chips away from it, and I think this is taking a little chip. Thank you again.
Any other comments from the board? Ms. Frescatore.
Yes, I would just like to again thank Mr. Monroe for advocating for the noise ordinance, because I know a lot of residents really appreciate this. I just have one question, Mr. Savona.
Yes?
I've gotten some phone calls from residents who, they don't live off of major thoroughways. They're in developments, say, off of Davisville Road, or off of Centennial Road, or what have you, and at nighttime, they're trying to go to sleep, and they're hearing these souped-up motorcycles and cars with the mufflers that are illegal. What do residents do in cases like that?
In most instances, the appropriate thing would be to call the township, the Allen High office, and warn the police department, depending on the time of day. This ordinance would allow a little more flexibility in terms of trying to prosecute violations like that, if the noise is excessive and if it's disturbing someone in their home in off-hours like that. Obviously, it would be incumbent on that resident to give the authorities as much information as they could.
They're basically talking about traffic.
Yeah. Traffic, to some extent, you're not going to be able to mitigate, but if someone is driving through the neighborhood, I have, in my neighborhood in Newtown, I have one kid who has one of those mufflers on a Volvo, of all things, and runs up and down the street. So if you can get the license plate number, or if you can identify the vehicle, that goes a long way toward helping the officers to ameliorate that problem. But I would suggest that, you know, something more than just the obvious traffic noise, if it's a persistent problem, then the best thing that they can do is alert the township so we can be on the lookout for it.
Thank you for the advice.
Any other comments from the board? Any from the public? I see none. I'm going to call the question. And all in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries. That's a good one. The next item would be, will be of interest to the residents here and the public at large, so I'm going to call for the approval of cooperation agreement and straw party agreement with the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority with regards to Shenandoah Woods, and I'm going to give that one to Mr. Savona to go into, a little bit in-depth of what this is all about.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll start by saying that this gives me enormous pleasure to bring to the board this evening. The township first started working on the ultimate disposition of the 55 acres that are known as Shenandoah Woods approximately eight, nine years ago, and it's been a long ordeal to get us to the point where we are right now, but I'm happy to report that the agreements that are in front of you this evening will enable us to acquire that property from the United States Navy and to permanently preserve it as open space. The board decided back in March to change direction. We had been for a lot of years trying to proceed along the path of finding a partner that could redevelop the site, remove the existing housing. For those of you who don't know, there are approximately 199, what we call townhouse or row house units that exist on that site. They're all in a very much dilapidated condition at this point. They've been abandoned since the early, I guess around 2010, when the Navy finally pulled out of the use of the property. And for a long time, the township had been attempting to explore a redevelopment of those sites. We partnered with the Redevelopment Authority back in 2009, 2010. The Redevelopment Authority of Bucks County, like any redevelopment authority, is in the business of redevelopment. They take areas that are blighted or contaminated and attempt to remediate those properties to turn them back into productive uses. So for a long time, the plan going forward was to attempt to find a user who could tear down those structures and rebuild single houses or a neighborhood that would fit the community around it. In the intervening time, and I should say, a portion of the property, approximately 26 acres of the 55 acres that are Shenandoah Woods, have always been intended to go to the township directly, to be incorporated as part of the park that's next door. So the 29 acres that were proposed for redevelopment have been in negotiation with the Navy in some form or other since January of 2013. The process that you go through in order to acquire a site like this is what we call a negotiated sale. The Navy really doesn't negotiate. They come in and they give you a number, and they tell you, "This is what you're going to pay." Their first number, I remember it like it was yesterday, even though it was four and a half years ago, was over $26 million to acquire 29 acres. Since January of 2013, we've been pecking at them, and pecking at them, and pecking at them, and pecking at them, and pecking at them, slowly and slowly, and the agreement that we finally have reached allows us to acquire the remainder of that site for $1 million. So it's, I consider it an incredible victory when you look at the cost of 29 acres.
And the board doesn't normally clap about spending $1 million. Trust me, we normally don't celebrate that.
No, but it's, what it does, it's money well spent. As all of you are probably aware, part of the reason why the redevelopment of that site has been something that the board has been, I think, reluctant, especially recently, to proceed with, is because of what we now know to be the presence of these contaminants, PFOA and PFOS, in the groundwater. And although this location is on public water and wouldn't be using the groundwater, nevertheless, the idea of developing home sites on that, on that property, and having someone pay to live in an area that may or may not be subject to contamination, probably isn't the best use of that site. It's also immediately adjacent to our Township Park, and it's near a neighborhood that probably would appreciate it much more if the land remained as open space and undeveloped. And so the board, as I said back in March, decided to switch gears and ask us to go back to the Navy with a new plan, which would involve going to the Redevelopment Authority, having them actually acquire the property from the Navy, the 29 acres. They would perform environmental, some environmental remediation on the site to remove some construction debris that was just buried up there by the Navy. They would remove and demolish the housing units that are there. They would remove and demolish the infrastructure that's there. They would work with our Parks Department to leave some of the roadways and some of the features, and install some of the features that we might want to integrate that into our park, but when we pull out and leave, and when the RDA turns that property over to the township, it effectively will be open space recreation, and will remain that way by deed restriction directly from the government forever. So the agreements that you have in front of you this evening, the cooperation agreement is our agreement with the Redevelopment Authority, that they will take title to the property directly from the Navy. They will remediate the site. They will perform demolition and remove whatever infrastructure we direct them to, and at the end of the day, they will turn over the property to the township. Obviously, we'll pay the charges for the acquisition and for the remediation and demolition as we go along, but the Redevelopment Authority will perform that work for us, and when they hand us the keys, so to speak, it will be an open space property. The straw party agreement, which is a companion agreement to, this is our agreement between the township and the Redevelopment Authority, to simply establish that the RDA is taking title to that property in trust, so that when they do transfer it back to us, sorry, Greg, but we won't have to pay transfer tax to the township again. So at this point, Mr. Chairman, and if there's any other questions, I would strongly recommend that the board approve the cooperation agreement and the straw party agreement with the Redevelopment Authority. We expect the board of the RDA to approve this document, as well as the purchase agreement with the Navy at their meeting tomorrow, and then from that point forward, the Navy will have to send this document to Congress, actually, for a 30-day oversight period in front of one of the Armed Services Subcommittee's, and then we'll be in a position, hopefully, to perfect the closing by the end of the year.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what, I'll ask for a motion in a second, and we can have any discussion the board would like to have, so I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the cooperation agreement and straw party agreements with the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority.
Motion.
Mr. McPhillips, second. Ms. Frescatore? Okay. Is there any comments from the board? I'm sure your board members might have a comment. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say, you know, this isn't just a financial decision. It's not even just a real estate decision. This is an ethical decision. You know, I can't speak for the entire board, although I think we're all on the same page on this. I mean, this is one of those situations where, you know, you have to consider all the potential people and families and children that would have been living on that property for not just the next five or 10 years, but 30, 40 years, probably for the rest, well, for the rest of my life. And, you know, knowing some of the contaminants that were there, and some of the testing results that we've got back, that wouldn't have sat right with me. And, you know, in order for me to sleep well at night for the remainder of my life, I think we're absolutely making the right decision.
Absolutely. I know Mr. McPhillips and I got on the board roughly at the same time, and this was really in flux then, and I probably speak on Dan's behalf, too, to how pleased we are to see this. This is a resolution that you and I had discussed privately four years ago. Boy, I'd love to see this end up open space, but we had to connect all these dots to get here, and it got to the point where the Navy wanted X amount of dollars for it, and we had developers come in, "Oh, we're going to have to put a ton of townhouses in there, and singles, and apartment buildings," and that, we, absolutely, that's the last thing we wanted to see, so I can't say how pleased I am to see this resolution up, and I'm sorry if I stole your thunder, Dan, but I know you and I had that discussion offline several years ago.
It's true. I remember it well.
I just wanted to say, as a new member of the board, I've been on the board now for over a year, and one of my big pet peeves, and everybody knows it's open space, and I was so happy to hear that we were able to acquire this property for such a reasonable price, thanks to Mr. Schuster and Mr. Savona for their negotiating skills and charm, which I'm sure they had to use.
Charm.
And to get it for such a reasonable price, I mean, the Navy, if I remember correctly, attending meetings in the past, Mr. Savona, wasn't that property up for $8 to $10 million at one point?
The number, as I said, it's been, I have been administering Chinese water torture to the Navy Department for the last four years. As I said, the initial offer was 26 million. They came back later after we challenged some of their assumptions in the appraisal. They came back, I think, with a revised offer of 17 or 18 million dollars. We went back at them again, and they revised the number down to $9 million, then $6 million, and then finally, they agreed to let us take it off their hands for the $1 million. So, yeah, it's been, it's been a long process.
Well, I thank you very much for all your efforts, and I know that Karen Whitney is probably ecstatic having this adjacent to the parks. I'm sure she's got lots of plans for it, and it'll be lots of trees and plants and everything for all of our residents to enjoy, so I'm very, very happy about it, and thank you so much for all your efforts.
And a future stormwater basin, and it'll hopefully mitigate some of the problems in the Decker Road and Avenue over that area. Donald?
Yeah, well, I look back, January of 2013, when I was starting to run for this Board of Supervisors, and sat down with Mr. McPhillips and Mr. McKee, and they were schooling me on what the big issues facing Warmminster were. There were two big issues at the time. Number one was stormwater at the Woody River Basin, and also at Ethan Green, both were resolved. The other one was Shenandoah Woods, and I literally laughed out loud when they told me the $29 million figure. And really, my hope was that at some point during my term, should I have been so lucky to be elected to it, that we would see the end, and it would be a win for us. For it to be a $1 million purchase for 55 acres is beyond what we could have expected. It's a testament to all the individuals involved over the past five, six years, a testament to Mr. Savona's negotiating skills, to the former board members who were involved, Mr. Quinn, Mr. Panzer, Mr. Feinberg, Mr. DeRosa, Mr. McCollough, and this board right here, who banded together to make sure that this went open space. So thank you to everyone who worked so hard on behalf of our residents, and I look forward to everybody enjoying that 55 acres for the end of time, so thank you, Mr. Chair.
Awesome. I think, Mr. Schuster, you have a comment before we take action?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to make sure everyone was still aware that although $1 million is the purchase price, if you recall, in a previous executive session, there was laid out for additional project costs that are going to go along with the remediation and reclamation of the property. We're actively working on putting together final details on that project, as well as how we're going to finance that. I've had several discussions with the Finance Director, and we're going to come to you at a later date with a plan on how to go ahead and finance the entire project. We're also seeking and have applied, actually, I should say, the RDA has applied on our behalf, for grants, and will continue to look for other grants to help allay any of the costs for the acquisition and any of the associated costs with the project. And as Mr. McKee just stated, this does fit in nicely with what Karen was just talking about earlier, with the MS4 plan, how the basin for Shenandoah Woods is going to be a requirement anyways, and so this will fit in well with this project as well. I just want to make sure the board was aware that above and beyond this singular purchase, there are other factors that we still have to go ahead and work on.
Right, and that 56 acres will take the entire Warmminster Community Park up to over 300 acres, which is a tremendous amount of open space here that we're very proud of. If there's no more questions from the board, or for comments, or from the public, I'm going to go ahead and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Motion carries. That's, that's really nice to be able to really put this in motion. Okay, the next up on tonight's agenda is consider approval of PFM agreements. Greg Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the previous meeting, this board did approve the changeover for the pension advisor. This was made through an exhaustive process, starting with an RFP that was responded to by 11 firms. That was all vetted by the Pension Investment Advisory Committee. That committee interviewed six of those firms and made a recommendation to select PFM. This board ratified that decision in the last meeting. Before you tonight, for the next three items, we'll consummate that decision. The first item, Item C under new business, is approving the agreement with PFM for them to be our pension consultant. The agreement has been reviewed and approved by Mr. Savona, and is before you for your consideration.
Okay. Is there a motion? Mr. McPhillips, second. Mr. Monroe, any questions or comments from the board?
The agreement, what? Hold on. Okay. The agreement, what is the length on the agreement?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Savona, it is without term and can be terminated, is it 60 days, 60 days notice?
All right, thank you.
And we've vetted this out pretty thoroughly at a previous meeting, along with the committee interviews with several pension investment advisors. So is there any other comments on the motion? Mr. Monroe?
Just to reiterate the previous meeting, I agree with you, Mr. Chair, it was a very thorough process led by Mr. Schuster. You know, it takes a little while to get your legs under you when you get on the pension advisory board. So I finally got my legs under me. It was a phenomenal process. I'm very happy, I know I didn't mention when we, but when we applied or approved the placement of those three union members onto the pension advisory board, that, you know, I, I'm very proud to be a part of that board, and I look forward to working with PFM.
Any other comments from the board? Any from the public? I see none. I'm going to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. Item D, consider approval of agreement with US Bank. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the second agreement to go along with this. In the current, or former, I should say, configuration with the advisor we are leaving, that advisor served as both an advisor and a custodian of funds. This is something that is not recommended. The custodian of funds should be independent from the advisor. That way, there's no chance that we could have a Bernie Madoff-type situation where funds from different firms or people can be intermingled. Don't get me wrong, I'm not at least suggesting that happened here. I have no suspicions, but it's just best practice not to do that. So in going forward with PFM, they, in fact, will not act as a custodian. Some firms will, some firms will not, but even if it wasn't PFM, I would be making this recommendation that we have a separate custodian of funds. PFM has a partnership with US Bank. We don't have to use US Bank, but they have to go PFM has a partnership with US Bank, we don't have to use US Bank, but they have negotiated preferred pricing for working with PFM, and the agreement to, with US Bank for them to be the custodian of funds was before you and has been reviewed by Mr. Savona.
Okay, is there a motion to approve agreement with US Bank? Mr. Crowley, second, Mr. McPhillips, any discussion from the board?
Can we change the custodial if need be? Can we change the custodial bank also if need be?
Yes, the custodian and our consultant are independent. So, if we ever had any cause or any desire to move away from US Bank, we absolutely could do that.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? And the Chair votes aye, motion carries. Item E, under New Businesses, Investment Policy Statement, which we went over in great detail in our committee meeting a couple of weeks ago with the Investment Advisory Committee, so, Mr. Schuster.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, even though we did not yet have an agreement signed with PFM, they were nice enough to come out to the last Pension Investment Advisor Committee. It is important for any organization that has a pension and works with a pension consultant to have an investment policy statement. That statement details what the rules are for investment of the funds, what your targeted allocations are, what funds can or cannot be invested in, and just lays out the scope of, of the parameters, I should say, of the investments. This investment policy statement was reviewed by the Pension Investment Advisory Committee, input was provided, and it was modified based on their input, it's now before you for adoption. Just a couple things, number one, it is a 65% to 35% target allocation, 65% equity with 35% fixed income, that's the target, so there's ranges that are associated with that, but those are the targets that they're going to be going after. Also, this is a longer horizon, the investments are not made for one year, for two years, they're made for 10 years, 15 years, so there is a really long time horizon, so the strategy that's going to be implemented is going to be investment in areas where we anticipate long-term growth. That doesn't mean that there will be short-term losses, it's very conceivable, in fact, it's a certitude, certitude, that as you look over the next five or 10 years, we're going to have a year or two, that's extremely bad, but that will be offset by years that are extremely good, and if we stay the course in the long term, we will have acceptable returns. So it is looking at that long-term horizon. And the last thing that's a change from our current setup is that we're going to a discretionary management style. Right now, with the advisor that we are leaving, it's a long and drawn-out process if we want to go ahead and change fund managers. So if there was a fund that we were invested in, that the, we decided was not doing so well, they would put them on a watch list, then they would, you know, monitor it some more, then they would come to the Pension Advisory Committee, make a recommendation, that committee would then make a decision, and make their recommendations to the Board of Supervisors, the Board of Supervisors would then make a decision, and then it would be implemented. And you can imagine how long that takes, and when you're trying to catch market conditions as they fluctuate, it's impossible to do so. This will, the way PFM works is they work in a discretionary model, where they will be making decisions on a day-to-day basis on what funds to invest in. They have already established pre-existing funds, you know, one fund, the fund we're going to go in is a 65-35 fund, you know, based on our target allocation, and they'll make decisions and notify us what those decisions are so they can hit the market. So I just want to make everyone aware that those are some differences between the investment policy statement that's in place right now versus the one we're asking to adopt at this meeting.
And I thought, and I think Mr. Monroe was on the committee meeting as well, that we agreed that, on this discretionary management, I mean, I was a drywall finisher by trade, I don't know the market of investments, that's what I'm hiring this professional to do on behalf of the taxpayers and the Board of Supervisors. I have to say, this PFM, they were far and above the other people that we interviewed, these people were just, their resources is phenomenal, and we're really excited about the possibilities that they can perform for us.
I'm good, and if the board's still inclined, I'd ask for a motion to approve the investment policy statement.
Okay, I will ask for a motion. Mr. McPhillips, second. Mr. Monroe, any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? And the Chair votes aye. Okay, next up on our tonight's agenda is Professionals Reports, Township Manager's Report, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you.
Busy tonight.
Happy to be busy. You have my written report, in case there's any questions, a few things of note, number one, I want to thank Penn Community Bank, they were nice enough to sponsor a number of shows at the William Tennen High School Planetarium, they brought in a few loads of kids to learn about stars and astronomy, but more importantly, about the upcoming eclipse and what to expect. I'd also like to remind everyone that it's a special occasion when there is a solar eclipse, however, don't be fooled, it's not going to get dark, you know, a lot of people think it is going to get dark, we're only going to have about 70 or 80% coverage, and even with that little amount of the sun showing, it's going to be just as bright as it normally is. So you have to get special glasses if you want to go ahead and see the solar eclipse, or you've got to take a drive down to Tennessee, or some of the other areas where they're in a full eclipse. The September meeting is going to be on September 7th, there will not be a meeting on September 21st. Also, want to give a quick update on the Firefighter Tax Relief Initiative, we had discussed that at the previous meeting, and the board definitely wanted to move forward. The issue that we're grappling with right now, I should say, Mr. Savona's grappling with, is that we have two very different standards in place for the two fire companies. And the research that has to get done is can we have two different standards, or do we have to develop one standard that both fire companies have to adhere to? So Mr. Savona's working through that, and hopefully we can get an ordinance before you to enact that policy soon. And lastly, just want to note that we do have open positions for volunteers, we have one in the Gulf Advisory Committee, and we also have some on the newly-formed Municipal Complex Subcommittee. And if anyone is interested, please go ahead and drop off or email your letter of intent or resume at my office, and we'll get you, we'll shoot it over to the board, and we'll get these committees filled.
Yeah, we'd really like to make those appointments in September if possible, so you get things rolling.
Absolutely.
Does anyone have anything for Mr. Schuster?
Yeah, getting back to utilizing Act 172, the two standards for the two fire companies, can we elaborate on that, on what the standards are?
Yeah, there is, and I forget which is which, but I believe it's the Wormminster Fire Company that seems to have a gold, bronze, silver standard, and we're not sure, you know, what you actually have to do to qualify, whereas, I believe it's Harts, and I apologize, I could be mixing the two up, I believe Hartsville has a straight point system, so it's just very different systems. And I actually have, if you want me to shoot it over to you by email, you can take a look at it, but we're trying to reconcile the two and figure out how this is going to work in the ordinance.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything for Mr. Schuster? Oh, okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the Solicitors Report, Mr. Savona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have submitted you my written report, if there's any questions, I can certainly, I'm happy to address those. What I wanted to address to the board this evening is a recent bill that's been introduced in the House, it's House Bill 1620, it's actually being sponsored, it's called the Wireless Infrastructure Deployment, or WID, Bill. It's been, it's being sponsored by six representatives, some of whom are from this area, Representative Ferry, Representative DeGiralemo, Representative Mert. I have a particular sensitivity to this particular issue because I was solicitor in Northampton Township from 2012 to 2014, and what this bill pertains to is something that Northampton had to grapple with directly, and that is the deployment of what they call Distributed Antenna Systems, or DAS. Imagine sitting in your house, one Sunday morning, or Saturday, I shouldn't say Sunday, Monday morning, having a cup of coffee, all of your utility lines are underground, guy pulls up in a truck, starts spray painting on your front lawn, and you find out it's because they're going to put up a 25-foot pole on your front yard to put a cellular node on with a big battery box, and because the wireless infrastructure company was considered a public utility by the Public Utilities Commission, and your street is a public street, they're allowed to do that, or so they thought. So, and that's exactly what happened in Northampton. A company named ATC came in and proposed to start distributing these antennas all over the township in residential neighborhoods. So the township fought back, we ultimately reached an arrangement where we moved all of those DAS nodes out of the neighborhoods, and there was no disruption to these areas. And since then, the Public Utility Commission has actually decertified these Distributed Antenna Systems operators as public utilities. So they're no longer entitled to just march into the right-of-way and do what it is that they would want to do, like PICO, or Verizon, or some of the other public utilities can. Well, that means that for a company to distribute an antenna system like this, they have to follow local zoning. And in Wormminster, after the Northampton debacle, we updated our ordinances, and our current code has a number of provisions that govern where these antenna systems can go, and how, and what areas, whether they can be in residential areas or not, and they're subject to local control. House Bill 1620 appears to be a direct response to the PUC's decertification of these utilities as, or these entities as public utilities, and among other things, the bill would strip Pennsylvania municipalities, including Wormminster, of all zoning authority over wireless antennas and equipment in the public rights-of-way, and would prevent the public from being allowed to comment at all on the allocation during the approval process. It would prohibit municipalities from requiring standard legal protections from companies within wireless facilities in the right-of-way, including indemnification, and bonding, and insurance. It would eliminate any possibility for the municipality to collect any revenue from the location of these facilities. It would cut our review and approval process from 30 days under the Telecommunications Act down to a mere 10 days, which means effectively, we can't even really review these things. And it would allow wireless providers to reverse a denial of any application simply by resubmitting a revised application without having to get any zoning approval. The list goes on and on and on, including exposing my firm or other attorneys who service solicitors or outside municipal firms to financial liability for up to $10,000 per occurrence if we draft a wireless ordinance that violates this new state law. So it's a real smack in the head to every Pennsylvania municipality who's really fought hard and fought for a long time to gain back authority over your right-of-way, and I would think it'd be in our interest, if the board's inclined, I would encourage you to contact the state representatives who are sponsoring this bill, PISA, the Pennsylvania Boroughs Association, Pennsylvania legal municipalities, they've already drafted and sent a letter to the General Assembly in strong opposition to this. I'm not sure if Pecado has had a chance to take it up yet, but...
Yeah, right against the Connecticut.
Okay.
But I'd like to see the board propose, craft a resolution to send...
If the board's inclined, I'd be more than happy to prepare or help the administration prepare an...
Get that on an agenda as soon as possible.
...in opposition to House Bill 1620, and all of you who are out in the audience, and you want to call your state representative and just tell them that you're opposed to 1620 because it really does do harm to your local municipality's ability to keep these kinds of utilities out of the right-of-way. So, that's the extent of my report this evening, Mr. Chairman, unless there's anything else, I'll turn it over to the...
I think we have a board consensus here to authorize you to craft a resolution on behalf of the board of township.
Absolutely.
Okay, next up on the agenda, does anyone else have anything for Mr. Savona, before we move on? Okay, Engineers Report, Mrs. McNair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have one update to the Engineers Report, we received a new submission for a project at Bristol and York Roads. It's a preliminary final land development application to demo the existing multifamily dwelling unit to build a two-story, about 6,000-square-foot footprint medical office with 46 parking spaces at that intersection instead. That project is anticipated to present at the September 12 Planning Commission, as well as the Victory Gardens Land Development Application, which is the property located on Ivy Land Road next to the Pierce Aluminum site. Also, after the meeting, I have two sets of record plans here for you to sign, one of which is the Christ Home Child Development Center project. Otherwise, unless you have any questions, that is my Engineers Report.
Excuse me, sorry, Mrs. McNair, I was conversing with my colleague, I have a question, Steak and Shake, anything new on that?
We have revised plans in which we are reviewing to meet the conditions of approval.
Oh, okay, so they are moving forward?
Yes.
Okay, great, great.
I do have a question, it has come up a bit on social media lately, and Supervisor Monroe did yeoman's work trying to explain it to everyone, my hat's off to him, but just for the sake of the public who may be watching this, when this replays in the days to come, is there any update on Weiss or Lidl?
Not that I have at this time, Mr. Savona.
At this time, there is no change in the status of Weiss and Lidl, they are still planning to come to Wormminster, nothing has changed, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
All right, I just, people are getting very impatient for their supermarkets, and I just, when I can, I like to repeat the information, it is coming, we know that we don't want those empty buildings there, and we're encouraging those retailers in the one manner we can, which is just very gently, please, please start the work, we're doing what we can, and we're working at those sites, so, thank you, appreciate it, Mrs. McNair.
Yeah, so those are in the, they're in the pipeline?
Yes, yes, we're waiting for them to contact us with a resubmission, and Weiss, we're just waiting for them to have a pre-construction meeting, their plans are fully approved, so, whiles in both of their courts.
Is there, is there, is there any way to be the squeaky wheel? There's one thing that some people have said, well, you know, can't you do anything?
Can't they put a sign out, coming soon, Weiss, you know, something like that?
We can certainly, one of the issues...
We would maybe even waive the permit fee for the sign.
One of the things, I can tell you, with Lidl at least, one of the issues that will have to be worked out is the, as you know, we approved the neighbor, or the amended plan a couple of months ago, and as you'll recall, there are some cross-easements with the next-door shopping center that have to be obtained in order for them to proceed with the site work and the reconfiguration of the traffic. That shopping center right now is in the midst of being sold, so they're in flux, they're in due diligence, and I've seen some back and forth between the lawyers for the buyers and the sellers, that Amanda and I both have been fielding inquiries, I don't suspect Lidl's going to be able to nail down those required easements until they, the new owners are in place, so, they're, that's of no fault of Lidl's, it's just a function of the free market and the fact that the property next door is being sold. Weiss Market, as I said, the last communication I had with their attorney, the development agreements were all negotiated and worked out, they decided for whatever reason to bump this project further down the construction schedule until the fourth quarter of this year, so it's possible that they could come in with permit applications, you know, at some time between now and the end of the year, but I haven't had any more information.
And it's a wonderful rendering of the building they want to put up there, that would be another coming soon, Lidl, maybe we could ask their attorney, that would, that would help the residents rest a little easier that these projects are in flux.
What shopping center is being sold?
SMG.
Oh, okay, no, I did not know that.
Yeah, part of their, part of when they did that remodel and the new facade, I think the idea was to get it in such a space that it would be more profitable during the sale, and it became to fruition.
Which, by the way, will be another nice transfer tax hit.
Yeah, no arguing. The last one that we get asked about a lot, I think, and we'll be fairly consistent about it, but I like it when we all speak with the same voice, Rosemore Donuts, is that still just pretty much stuck in limbo for the foreseeable future? Thank you.
Anything else?
Funny you should, I had lunch with Steve maybe three weeks ago, and he's just banging his head against the wall, he said his clients just stopped doing anything, including paying him, so, we're, he's just as eager to see him get moving too.
Well, they were going like gangbusters before they had the proper approvals and permits, you know, I wondered to myself, we should have left them alone. Just kidding, they were going like gangbusters without the proper, proper permission from the township. Anyway, is there anything else for the professionals? No? Okay, next up is Item 9, Township Manager's Announcement of Upcoming Agenda Items, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the September meeting, which again will be on September 7th, we are planning on bringing a proposed update to the Housing Inspection Ordinance. We'll also have, I believe Mr. Meehan will be here for Brad Fox to give a little bit of an update, anticipate sending the library HVAC system out to bid, again, that's grant-funded, and at the moment, no land development for September, so right now looking as a relatively light agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Item 10, Second Round of Public Comment, does anyone from the public have a comment? Please, come on up, we welcome your comments, suggestions.
I'm Al Bradley, 14-year resident here at Ann's Choice, come from a big background of involvement in the boards such as yours, from Montgomery Township, Springfield Township, Montgomery County. I have to say to you, I watch you faithfully on Channel 22 when you're live, if I'm not home, on the reruns, you do a great job for the residents of this township.
Thank you.
And the news tonight are great on the Navy situation and your investment... And the news tonight, great on the Navy situation and your investment pension plan, because that was my, my work.
We're much better looking in person, though, I hope.
You do change a little bit. I have a concern, I spoke to both of you tonight about it, I didn't want to raise any problems with it, but maybe some of the residents don't know that the ambulance here closed its doors on June 1, and I have to say that the board took exactly fast movement. We got coverage right away from Central Bucks. I have concern about the 14, almost 2,000 people we have here, we're getting older. I am told that, and confirmed from the ambulance group that's here now and present, that on the average, six calls a day in the 24-hour period here at Ann's Choice. I'm concerned about, is the coverage that we're going to be getting enough? I think we have to continue to monitor it for the future, because we're all getting older, and we're only a small part of a big township. In Springfield, Montgomery County, we had two ambulances and a much shorter run to Chestnut Hill Hospital. And just saw in the paper today, tonight's Herald, that Salisbury has asked for a vote in November to increase the taxes to support a strong paid ambulance service, which will also take into new hope. So all I ask is, let's keep it in mind, because I'm concerned about we people, plus the rest of this township, and the coverage that we need. We're blessed to have EMS people here 24/7, and it's they that call the ambulance when it's needed. And so just keep, keep on top of it.
Your concerns are very, very legitimate. I know Mr. Schuster monitors it daily about the coverage that everything's where it should be. If you want to comment, please do.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We...
Before you go, I wanted to respond to your comment. I wanted to tell you that, you know, this is a full-time, part-time job for all of us, and sometimes it can be hectic, sometimes it can be fun, but your comments are greatly appreciated, and it makes it worthwhile to all of us why we're doing this.
There's always some good comes out of every single meeting.
I want to thank you for that.
And that's the...
Really do, on behalf of the board, I know you're speaking...
And you're a bipartisan committee, which is very encouraging to me.
Thank you. Go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, I'll just follow up on the ambulance comment. It was unfortunate when we were notified that Warminster Ambulance, who had been serving the community for many decades, had to close their doors for financial reasons. We were able to move quickly and arrange for Central Bucks EMS to come in. They're providing the same ambulance coverage as before, they're operating out of the same station. In fact, they're still, I believe they're still in negotiations to acquire that station. It's been a relatively seamless transition. I haven't heard of any issue. I do monitor it all the time, I get stats all the time. If there's any issues, it'll be brought to my attention. But so far, it has been fortunately very smooth, and I also mentioned, not only do we have the 24/7 paramedic service based out of the station on York Road, not too far away over in Warwick, that station was also taken over by Central Bucks EMS. Their volume is not nearly as much as we have here in Warminster, so there's always responses out of there. If they're, if it's quicker for them to respond at Warwick Station, or if the ambulance out of the Warminster Station is on another call, they always have the ability to pull from the Warwick Station. And also, we always pull from other townships as well, through mutual aid. So I've seen nothing that alarms me. It does, it is something that I monitor quite a bit. The primary function of government is public safety, and police, fire, ambulance are a big part of that. So the ambulance service is always forefront of my mind, but if there's any issues, please feel free to direct it to me. I'll be happy to look into it, but I'm happy to report that everything seems to be working very smoothly with Central Bucks. And they've been doing this for a while, and they serve over a dozen communities right now. So we're lucky to have a professional organization that's been able to step in.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Is there any other public comment?
And if, yeah, well, with public comment, too, one thing, I know that sometimes from the meeting we had last time, mobility could be an issue. So if anybody had a public comment but didn't want to walk all the way down there, we'll bring a mic to you if you, if you had anything you wanted to say. Just raise your hand. I was going to give it to you, Bob. I was going to give you the mic, but, but I just, I just want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity. So I'll take your mic to them.
Larry's got a mic. Larry, do you have one, Larry?
And many thanks to Ms. Karen Whitney for assisting.
Been sitting too long. Jim Kibbels, Ann's Choice, just had a question. On the supervisor that started in the beginning about the Sterling, Sterling Act, do you have a coordinated effort with other townships or communities in the area, so like, we're the only ones that are contacting the Assemblymen?
There is, there's a strong efforts between Montgomery County, Bucks County, Chester County, and Delaware County that are doing that. And it's, we're reaching out to the state legislators who represent those different areas. And again, I mean, I can't stress enough, to Warminster, our community, we're losing $400,000 a year because of the Sterling Act. We have 1,600 residents who live here in Warminster and work in the city of Philadelphia. And again, the 1% that Warminster imposes stays in Philadelphia. This is a matter of fairness, I believe, that Philadelphia, they can keep the 2.5%, we just want the 1%. And just to think about, we talked about ambulance, we talked about police, everything that we could do with that money. And that's not a one-shot deal, $400,000 is yearly. So to answer your question, yes, there is a tri-county, four-county effort to try to reform this, and there is a bill in the House, and there is a bill in the Senate. I believe it's Scott, Representative Scott Petry has a bill in the House, and Tommy Thompson, State Senator Tommy Thompson, has a bill in the Senate. But I'm hopefully optimistic that we can get change and try to reform this.
Have you advertised to the taxpayers of Warminster?
We did. In fact, this board joined with 27 other townships within Bucks County and voted on a referent, wrote it on a resolution in support of the Sterling Act. What had happened was, the Sterling Act was proposed at last session last year in Harrisburg, but it died out. It went in front of the Finance Committee, which is chaired by our own, very own state rep, Bernie O'Neill, who's chairman of the Finance Committee, but unfortunately, it died out. So it was reintroduced this year, again, not to be redundant, by Representative Scott Petry in the House and Tommy Thompson in the Senate. So the House is, they're going to, they're going to debate it, it's going to go in the committee, I would assume, and it'll go back to the Finance Committee, and Representative O'Neill will here, hold hearings again on this. And the best thing that we can do, that you can do, is to reach out to the governor and our state reps and state senators, and let them know that you support reform of the Sterling Act. Again, this is really is the matter of fairness.
No, I agree.
Getting the 1% that we rightly deserve.
We could use it to finance Shenandoah.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And a whole lot of other things.
Thank you.
Yes. Is there any other public comment? Right here, would you mind handing the microphone off? Sure.
I'd just like to ask the numbers of those bills.
Do you know the numbers? The numbers of those bills?
I will get them for you. After the meeting, I'll get your name, your number, and I will definitely get that for you.
Any other public comment? Okay, so seeing none, we're going to move on then to supervisors' comments. Ms. Frescatore?
Again, I'd like to say thank you so much for all of your, all of your comments and for coming to participate. I'm very excited to be here, it's my first meeting at Ann's Choice, and it's been wonderful to spend the time with you this evening to discuss the issues that important to both of us. I usually do not get on my soapbox. Some of you commented to me when I came in that I always say these great positive comments. Well, I do have them, but first, I have a little bit above the soapbox I'd like to I really, really care about the flooding issues that we're having on Centennial Road and the surrounding streets. And a lot of folks know, in that neighborhood that I live in, that I did not vote for the Tall Oaks development, because I was not convinced that county builders were going to build a basin that was going to take care of the water issues that we have. And I grilled them, and grilled them, and grilled them, and I think, I have to look back at my notes, but I think they said something like 60% it would cover of all the water that comes down Centennial Road, all the surrounding homes and the streets. So I know, I have great confidence in our engineers, Ms. McNair and Mr. Kennard. I know that they will make sure that County Builders takes care of the situation, so we can increase the quality of life for our neighborhood. And that's all we really care about, is just, we know it's not going to take care of all the issues we have, but if it, if it does alleviate a good portion of it, I know that everybody in the neighborhood would be happy. Okay, now, for the good comments, I would certainly like to thank Mr. Schuster, our township manager, who has been steering the township in the right direction, and we can, we can tell from the report that he gave tonight that we are exceeding expectations with our finances, which we are very happy to hear. We also would like, I'd also like to thank Mr. Kennard, Ms. McNair, and your whole staff for all the hard work that you do with the engineers. We couldn't do it without you. And you do an incredible job, and I just want to thank you. And also, Mr. Savona, who is very savvy and worked very hard with Mr. Schuster and former supervisors and current supervisors here on the board to acquire the Shenandoah Woods for the open space that we can all enjoy, again, good quality of life for our residents. And every, everybody who participates in the township behind the scenes, you see us up here, but there are so many behind the scenes that work very, very hard to make our meetings look like they just go off without a hitch. But I want to thank all of them, too, for all their hard work. And that's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you for indulging me on my soapbox, too.
No problem. The world's your oyster. Mr. Monroe.
I guess I'll be the first one to say that we should probably have this annually here.
Yeah, I'm gang, sure.
I knew one of you was going to say it, so I figured I'd jump the gun. Other than that, that is all that I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Mr. McPhillips?
I guess the summit, we had a great meeting at a great location. We got a lot of work done tonight, and a lot of positive things for the township, and thank you for, everyone for coming out.
Mr. Crowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, thank you to Ann's Choice and her residents for welcoming us. Anywhere where you go that you give us multiple ovations, we will return. So the more you clap, we're like fairies, we return to the scene. So we look forward to coming back and engaging with this community over and over again. It's always invigorating to have, at the end of our meeting, 40-plus people in a room. I can't tell you the last time that happened. So I thank you for coming to our meeting, for participating, and for staying for the entire meeting. As is my want, in August, I have to do a couple quick personal announcements, and that's, one is to wish my youngest son a happy ninth birthday, so happy birthday, Jacob, and to wish my wife a happy anniversary. Like most men, I married up, way up, so I celebrate around this time every year, the fact that I pulled one over on her. So happy birthday, babe, thanks. Happy birthday, happy anniversary, babe. I won't forget the gift. I may forget what to say, but I won't forget the gift. And all that being said, thank you to everyone for coming out. Be safe, enjoy the rest of your summer, and we'll see you the next time we're here. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. I, too, want to thank the residents of Ann's Choice. This has, this has been truly amazing, and I'd really, really like to do it again. Perhaps we can do an annual thing here. It was really great of Chris Donati and the staff here to put this on. And I have to tell you that your board, and Chris in particular, we meet periodically with the township manager and Chris and his staff to see what we can do together. One of the things that came out of it was the tree stumps being removed along Johnsville Boulevard. That Chris was good enough to step up with the association and just remove them to make it an already beautiful road, beautiful again, from the tree stumps, and I want to thank Chris for that. And that was just a product of one of our just sit-down general discussions to talk about the township, so we really appreciate it, and it's great to be here with you. And as Jason said, it's really great to see people here at the end of the meeting as well, so. And Ms. Frescatore touched on some of the staff, too. I want to thank Amanda Zimmerman and Larry Dero Copay. Did I pronounce that right, Larry? That our township people that made this happen, that set everything up and coordinated with Ann's Choice, because it wasn't an easy task to bring the Board of Supervisors meeting here, but thank you, Larry, and thank you, Amanda, for that. My last comment is that we're back to business attire in September. Mr. Monroe's already way ahead of the curve, but we'll be back to business attire in September. So thanks very much, and with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Mr. McPhillips, meeting adjourned. Thank you. Thank you all.